Oh, look, it's a lane tide. Look at that.
Exactly.
That's basic tide.
I like that.
Hey, you know what makes that tide? You know what makes that tide? The food stains on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Don't mention it.
Look, look.
Work, work, work.
Lay dog. Look, it'll say.
I bet you next week.
I go to John Johnson.
Oh, my God.
He's got, he's got no socks on.
By the fall.
All right. Let you know.
Where's my appointed time of 5:30? Having the appointed time of 5:30 has arrived. I would like to call the Tuesday, August the 27th, 2024 Committee to hold the order. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donnellin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would accept the motion for the approval of the August the 13th, 2024 Committee meeting minutes. It's properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Treasurer, would you like to present your Treasury report?
Thank you, Chair. Chuck, stop looking at her like that. Thank you, Chair. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of July. The beginning balance is $51,395,627. We took in total receipts of $16,1,629. Total disbursements in the month of July totaled $13,780,738, which left the Corporate Fund balance in the month of July at $53,616,518. The general fund also included $13,890,792, which was the ARPA ending balance for the month of July. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
It's been properly moved in second to accept the Treasury report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances remaining or tabled in committee. Is there any action on them that any Alderman would like to take or other woman?
You want me to read them?
Yes, please.
2024-089, 2024-178, 2024-239. Do we know how long some of those have been on? Is there, is it?
Yes, there's a.
Is it six months now or nine months? How long do they stay on?
It's six months. So, Aaron's will be the first one up next month to make a decision on.
You know, I'll probably bring that up next week, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No problem. So, there's dates on them and they track them. So, they're supposed to fall out after six months. Yes. Okay. Now for ordinances for the committee consideration. Mr. Clerk.
CWLP, 2024-309, an ordinance approving and authorizing proposal number UE-25-09 Springfield Smart City and Asset Management Program with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $500,000 and authorizing supplemental appropriations in the total amount of $500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-310, an ordinance approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $300,000 under contract number UE-22-06-38 by product calling for Dahlman Power Plant with J. Horos Environmental Incorporated in an amount payable of $1,600,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-311, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement parts for Unit 4's ID fans from Howden USA Company in an amount not to exceed $148,944 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-312, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of support maintenance for VMware clusters for a three-year term with Zones LLC from state contract in an amount not to exceed $367,381.26 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
Properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-313, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to accept, execute, and supplementally appropriate the Public Water Supply Energy Efficiency Program grant in an amount of $54,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
And properly moved in second for consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-314, an ordinance approving a telecommunications fiber capacity license agreement with Springfield Clinic LLP for 1025 South Sixth Street and 3201 Robbins Road for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
And properly moved in second for consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Redpath.
Can somebody address this? I wanted to know what the schedule is on the fiber optic stuff. Does somebody have that information? Would you get it, please? I just wanted to know when they're gonna, how they're swinging around the city because we need it where I'm at.
This is a different deal, Chuck. That's more for TV and broadband.
Oh, that is?
Yeah, this is, this is our. I'm sorry.
No problem. No, go ahead.
I misunderstood maybe what you're asking.
I believe this is just using our fiber.
Right, correct.
For, for.
So, this is, this is basically the Springfield Clinic.
So, it's not the, it's not the fiber optic that they're installing on the city?
No, no, this is what we provide to businesses.
Does somebody have any idea what that program is and how it's going? Mr. Lesko over there, do you know?
It'd be I-3 and AT&amp;T.
Would you, would you have somebody look into that for me, please? Thank you.
You'll know when they're in your ward, trust me.
I want them in my ward.
Yeah, you'll get the calls.
I got the worst cable TV in the world.
All right, all right. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Public Works, 2024-315, an ordinance approving the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to access to public street for living at Westgate for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second, send this on to consent. Any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2024-316, an ordinance approving the site development plan for living at Westgate for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for consent agenda. Any discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-317, a resolution for the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code pertaining to spending motorfield tax funds on the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, MFT Section Number 20-00491-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second. I'll second.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-318, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR-0089 located at 921 North 10th Street in an amount of $1,133.08 relating to the usable segment 6B of the Springfield Well Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-319, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR-0091 located at 923 Phillips Street in an amount of $12,005.17 relating to the usable segment 6B of the Springfield Well Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2024-320, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW-25-05-15 with Traffic Control Corporation for video image vehicle tracking and detection systems in an amount not to exceed $206,250 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for the debate.
Second.
Well, the motion has been for debate. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer.
Well.
Or Donnellin first, then Hanauer.
I didn't hit my button. I'm sorry.
Obey the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just asking if one of the staff could come up and just explain what this is.
Then I'll have to talk.
It looks like it's a motion sensing system at intersections, but not certain.
Hi, Director. That is correct. These are to replace video detection systems in five separate locations here in the city. These are not video cameras that record images. They simply initiate the traffic control sequence. It senses that a vehicle is in the lane and it initiates the sequence.
So, I get, Director, I get this question quite often and obviously the state has been ahead of us with having these types of systems throughout the, throughout and around the city. And, you know, whether they're cameras or not, we explained what you just did. So, it's essentially the same technology, right?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I have the five locations if you'd like those.
Sure, yeah. Why not?
Any more discussion? Well, let's just make sure we start with Ward 3 when we start putting these out. I appreciate you. Thank you.
These are going to be located at Legacy Point Drive at Imagineer Drive, South Grand Avenue at Wheeler, South Grand Avenue at Pope Avenue, South Grand Avenue at County, the County Health Building and the gas station there just east of, Eastdale, and on Sangman Avenue at 19th Street.
Are you just saying these things because he's the chair this evening? Is that his fault?
Four out of five. That ain't bad. Appreciate you, Director.
Yes.
Thank you, David.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you for that explanation, Director. I thought this related to something else and I do change my motion to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved to, we're going to put this on consent now. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-321, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $217,500 for an unappropriated fund balance to accommodate the remaining balance due with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for the design of new streets and traffic facility for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent. Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Not.
Alderman Gregory.
No, I just like to say I'm happy to see this come forth and it's another step forward to replacing that garage over there. I know our employees have long wanted, wanted that and I think, think it's due time. So, I'm happy to see this come through. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-322, an ordinance supplementing an agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated to perform construction observation services for usable segment 3 of the Springfield Well Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent. Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. General City Business, 2024-323, an ordinance to increase the number of Class C liquor licenses by one for Feast Buffet and Fun Kiddo LLC doing business as Feast Buffet and Fun Kiddo located at 3125 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Motion for consent. Second.
Been properly moved, send this on to our consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-324, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFPCS-19-29 in execution of an agreement with American Legion Post Number 809 for sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at 1801 East Jackson Street in the amount of $500 for the Office of Budget and Management. Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-325, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFPCS-19-29 in execution of an agreement with Jake Gallagher for the sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at 903 North 12th Street in an amount of $500 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-326, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFPCS-19-29 in execution of an agreement with Christine Smith for sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at 1030 South College Street in an amount of $500 for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second it for send this to consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to real quickly thank our Office of Budget and Management, our grants people who are working on getting these properties sold and off our. Kayla, I'm trying to say you. I know you've been working very hard on getting this stuff organized, but you're sitting next to Amy, so I got confused. No, but I just, I really appreciate seeing these properties move off the city's, you know, roster and into, into other hands. Looking forward to seeing them become something more for the neighbors and the community where they are. So, thank you for that. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-327, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFPCS-19-29 in execution of an agreement with Nathaniel Woodson for the sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at 1816 South 8th Street in an amount of $500 for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-328, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFPCS-19-29 in execution of an agreement with James Forney for sale of city-owned property consisting of three parcels located at 1018, 1020, and 1022 North Indiana Avenue in an amount of $1,500 for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-329, an ordinance submitting ordinance 348-08-22 removing the requirement of 50% escrow to the city of Springfield for owner-occupied residences for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
Yes, Director, can you explain? I thought we already did this once. Is this on a, on a different program?
I brought the brains with me tonight.
So, we did it for cannabis. This is for citywide. This is, we had to do it separately for each.
Is there any more of our programs that we?
Nope, this is the last one.
We were wanting to get everything consistent. So, that was the reason that we did it.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-330, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of a modification to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, grant number MC-21-034, in an amount of $142,160 for additional funding for the Children's Museum Foundation doing business as KidZim and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $142,600 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion will have Alderwoman.
I just want to be marked as present for this.
Okay. Noted. Mr. Clerk. Present. And I just want, I had a question. Is this the regular grant that, that they normally get annually?
This is actually an additional funds that came from IDNR for this grant that we serve as a fiscal manager for.
Okay, thank you.
So, just adding more funds so they continue their construction.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any more discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. 2024-331, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement with Hoogland Center for the Arts for the modernization and repair of two elevators using community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $190,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Move for consent.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Motion for debate.
Probably moved in second for debate. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman.
So, we're giving money for elevator repair and we have housing over on Second Street that can't get an elevator fixed. Is there, why don't these people, why don't they qualify for this kind of stuff too? If you can explain that to me, please.
I'm sorry, for, for someone on Second Street.
The Lincoln Towers.
Lincoln Towers.
Lincoln Towers that we've been talking about for years now.
Probably about three, yeah.
So, for our funds, they're for nonprofit organizations like the Hoogland Center and to get them up to ADA requirements. That's what makes it eligible for those funds, the federal funds.
So, they have to be a nonprofit. Okay. You know, that's a, that's a sore subject for everybody sitting at this table because we, those poor people can't get up and down their elevators and I wish there was a way we could find some grant money or something to help get those elevators repaired. It's, it's a real problem.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
It'd be nice to just find the owners. Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Yes. Man, we say this for not-for-profits only?
Yes.
It's, okay. Well, I won't ask questions about certain businesses, but I, I will say I support the Hoogland. I've approved some, some things and talked with them and I support them on that. But I really, 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 along with, with some others, I, you know, I think we talk about housing and how much the need is. I just received a letter from a guy who has a quite significant issue with his home and we sent him a letter and said, hey, you can't have it right now. It's not an emergency. So, I, you know, I think we've had this discussion before about funds and I just found out about all of this today, right? And I know there's got to be community input and things of that nature and, you know, I, I know those things are low. And, but they are important of where we're going to spend these funds at and things. And so, you know, I'm going to leave it on debate for now as I think it through over the week on how I'm going to vote. But I stress the importance of, of community development block funding going to as much of housing as we possible. You know, we've had other projects. We switched some funds too. I would rather see something like this come out of, come out of TIF funds. That's my spiel. Thank you.
Do you want me to address that? Okay, as far as for the housing that you, rehabilitation that you mentioned, it's not so much as funding as it is capacity. We're only, we have so many emergencies, people with no lights, no, no cooling in the hot weather, they have a hole in their roof, that we're not able to get to the non-emergencies. We just don't have enough contractors or people that work in my department that are, were able to do that many projects. We're overwhelmed with emergencies.
Right. No, I, I totally understand that. But his letter stated he was eligible for the funding and then I guess because it was an emergency, he become ineligible. So, his concern was, well, well, why is he knocked off the list altogether? Just because, you know, it was deemed not an emergency. And then, then, then to the contractor point of it, I know that some of these programs allow the resident to do, perform the work. His particular project was electrical work. I wouldn't advise anybody who not experienced in that to do that anyway. But it's a pretty significant problem that he has as well. You know, so, so I, I get the, you know, your workload and things, but there is other avenues for them to find contractors and try to get work done. And then at that point, if they, if they can't do it, then, you know, they see that we, we don't have the contractors nor does the community have the contractors. But I, I think that our process has to, to think that way, especially when, you know, we're passing these things and we're, we're giving out community development block funding with not a whole lot of community input in it, you know? And, and no fault of our own, we're going through the process, we're posting it and people are missing it. And that's why I encourage us to find other unique ways to make sure that the community, so we can get some feedback. So, when we come with these projects, not only does the Alderman know, but the community knows as well. And I think those things are important.
Now, we're doing the best that we can.
We did send them a list of defined emergencies. And then we do have other programs like the TIF Home Rehab Program where they can find their own contractor. For ours, we find the contractor. So, that's just something that we have to do. And as far as like them being on the waiting list for so many years, I just, we were never going to get to them. So, I didn't want it to just keep someone on a list that they were going to be on for years and years and realistically, we can only deal with emergencies, so.
And we did, we did state that if you, if it becomes an emergency, to please call us back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. Ms. Julia, I know that Director Posey have been working on a minority contractors list too. Can, can we kind of combine some of them and see if your list is different from his? I'm not sure where that, where has he at on how many contractors we have, but I know that's been a steady issue and that just hit a light bulb for me to say, can we work with his list too that he's creating?
Definitely. We always take more contractors in our departments that we, that we link up with, so.
And what do you need to, to be on that list?
With just a simple application that they will fill out years of experience, that kind of thing. And then when we have a project, we'll email them and let them come to the walkthrough or just notify them if it's an emergency project that they can bid on.
Okay. Please send that to me and I'll help push it out to the public.
I definitely will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, so you two are, this is pretty much the best fit. CDBG is the best fund to use for this project.
I thought it was a good fit and it goes with the objective that we're helping out with the ADA requirements.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more discussion?
All right, one more question. Is there, what other funds would, would possibly qualify?
Possibly TIF funds, but that would have been at a percentage. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any balance that we have into our next award next year?
Or a CDBG fund?
Can you send, can you send me our balance, where we at?
Yeah, I can tell you now they're exhausted until we get more funding next year, July.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. No more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-two, an ordinance authorizing community housing development organization CHDO subrecipient agreement twenty-four dash SR dash zero zero one zero with Growth International Incorporated for the rehabilitation of property located at two eighteen East Lawrence, utilizing CHDO funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. For consent, any discussion? I, I just did have one question and it can, whoever from the department can come up with the question, please. I'm trying to understand the amount for rehab. Two hundred and eighty to me is significant. Is this a?
Ms. Julia, I could help you too.
Yeah. The prices have went up significantly on like buildings, materials. The first estimate that we came back, came back at over four hundred thousand dollars. So this is much reduced from there. It is a large home, four bedroom, two bath, and it's down to the studs. So I realize this, it is a large amount, but we're hoping that it comes in this low. I mean, just with the bids that we, that we got and the estimates that we received, they were much higher than this. We've taken off a lot of, of things to get it down to this price.
And Roy, I looked at the foundation. I went by the property too, so I know some money is going into that, which is going to cost a lot as well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm for all this. I'm just thinking, you know, as alderman, there's three houses in my ward taking, you know, that this price could take care of three, you know? But in any case, I appreciate your answer and thank you, alderwoman, for your comments. Any more discussion?
How, how, how big is this house?
It's about fifteen hundred square feet.
And we're putting two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and would it be, what, what would be the price if we tore it down and built new?
That, that wasn't, that was a suggestion that we had to demo it. We hated to, the owners, Growth International, if you want to come up here and speak to that. That was a suggestion I made to them. They have another house on Edwards that we're rehabbing now to sell to a low-income family. It doesn't need nearly as much work as this and it's two hundred thousand was the lowest bid. So, but if you want to talk about the option that, as far as demoing it.
Uh, yes, there was a consideration to demo it and build new. But at the time, we can get a real good price that would include the use of the home funds limitation that, or the budget for the, for the home funds and, and then try to rebuild anew. So it would have come much more than both of those things combined. And that was just kind of what we came up with.
Anything else, Alderman Hanauer?
No, I just think that's kind of crazy. It's, that's a lot of money for rehab for a fifteen hundred square foot home.
Alderman Redpath.
So is there any responsibility of the contractor to be able to show the money spent as, do you guys set that up?
Yes, definitely.
And, and how does that work? They, does somebody oversee in this whole project?
Yes, they wouldn't. Well, first one, it'll go out to bid. So this is just an estimate off of the architect. Once it goes out to bid, then they'll be an itemized what everything costs and as they're reimbursed, we go by that. So it has to match up.
I gotta go along with the, with the group. It's a lot of money. That's a lot of money for rehab.
We, we were shocked when we, when we received the bid. We were like, what? Like?
Alderman Gregory?
Uh, yes, I, I would agree. It is a lot of money. I would ask, Mr. Porter, you guys, your organization is the only chodo in the city still left.
I believe so.
Yes.
Yeah. I agree that it is, you know, quite a bit much money, but considering you're the only chodo in town and that can use this specific funds, I think that we move forward. Definitely, you know, you know, you can understand how we want to do as much as we can with our limited funds. That's, that's something that I've learned to do pretty well, is trying to spread that money as far as possible. So, um, thank you. I appreciate you.
We're doing everything that we can to, you know, maybe get that below the final price.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I pulled up on the tax, the Sangamon County Parcel Viewer that the fair market value of the property is forty-four thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
Help me understand again. I hate to be repetitive, but how is it economically a good idea for us to invest two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in a forty-four thousand dollar building? It will never, I mean, the assessment will never equal what we're putting into it.
Well, it's going to be rented, so over time, you know, they'll be able to bring in hopefully that much money. And then the money that they make goes back into their next project to be able to fund another home for a low-income family.
I, I think the cause and what you're trying to do is absolutely wonderful. It just, I, I assumed, and I was going to ask out of the meeting, you know, I assumed it was one of the commercial buildings along Lawrence and when I learned it was a single family just now, it just raises flags.
I mean, we struggled with it as well when we got those prices back. But that's just what they're coming back at right now.
I'd like to put this on debate just so that we can think about it. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with what you're trying to accomplish. I'd like to just talk offline and learn a little bit more about this process. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So it's been properly moved in second to put this on debate? What we got? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry with Alderwoman Nutriano.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say to the point of the fair market value versus this amount or any amount to rehab a house like this, there will be a huge difference. If, if you look at fair market value versus what houses are being sold for right now, there is a big disparity. So I understand that big gap is, is galling. But if you looked at another sample of properties, you would find very similar numbers. It's just how the market is right now.
Doesn't make it right.
So, so just a comment. So, uh, you know, I said earlier, my example was I could do three in my ward. So what's the particular area, area at all, Alderwoman, that is kind of making a difference? Is it the type of homes over there or is it something significant, historic? Or what is it that's making it the way you're describing it?
Because there is a housing shortage and buyers are ready to spend whatever it takes to get into the neighborhood they want.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
On your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, if I might, I'm going to ask Steve Parker to come up here.
Okay, Director.
He's the architect and he can probably give a little more insight.
If I could just real quickly ask my question. Chair, I was, I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not looking at your screen. I'm sorry.
No, you're not. I'm sorry, I'll leave at you all day long. You know that.
All right, so we're going to do Alderwoman Conley, then we're going to do Alderwoman Purchase and then we're going to go back to the Director.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, truly, maybe you could just kind of explain a little bit the, how these community housing development organization funds come into play? Just, because it's been a while since we've talked about those.
So, as an entitlement community, we get home funds annually and a portion of those go to our chodos that must be used for chodo projects for housing development. And this is our only chodo. This year, we received five hundred thousand dollars in home funds and then a portion goes to our chodos. Then we have carryover money from last year where it wasn't spent. So we had additional funds that they were able to spend this year.
Thank you. And so are we under a time limit for when we can spend these funds?
We are. We have to meet our time limit. It'll come next spring that they're going to check and make sure that our funds have been spent.
And is there any consequences?
We can lose our funds. They, we've, actually since we.
You can lose, I was going to finish sentence real quick. See, look at you wanting to anticipate everything, right? But are there any consequences for future funding amounts if we don't spend everything down?
Um, well, the, the home funds have been reduced. I don't know if that's because they hadn't been used in the last year or two. So, but they can be reduced if they're not spent.
And I understand it's, and again, I do want to hear from the architect. I think that would, that would help kind of understand a little bit more of what this was, but it's, these aren't city funds. These are federal funds.
Federal head funds, yes.
Our housing funds that are, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And then I also, I see, Director, when you're finished, I know Ethan Posey is primed and ready to speak too.
Yeah, I think he got a high estimate too. But, yeah, these funds are specifically for low-income housing development to fill that gap in the city, so.
Yeah, very much.
So I'm going to have Alderwoman Purchase. I'm going to do the Alderpeople first, then I'm coming back. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Ms. Julia, for explaining that because like you said, he's the only chodo. So if our council was to vote it down next week, the money would just be sitting there too as well. And also just for even more background, they had wanted to even do a duplex and the, the amount was way higher too as well. So it's not like we can take it and put it in other wards. We got to make what we can, but it has to be a certain area that they target. And to go off of Alderwoman Nutriano's comment about the housing market, even just over in Ennis Park, you buy a house for two thousand dollars, you put a hundred and twenty-five in it. We just recently had a house sale for two twenty over there. So when you do the, the maintenance, the TLC to it, it brings the value up a large amount. And with the housing market right now, things are selling for two to three times more. And just on drywall alone in that square footage home, you're looking at eleven thousand dollars. Then tape and mud, you're looking at six thousand dollars. Like just going off of projects that I'm in the middle of right now with that size of a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. And if you have to do foundation around a historical home, it just takes a little bit more. If you're trying to keep the siding to the wood siding, it's also extra, extra funding too that would have to go into there. So the cost is just astronomical at this point. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, so is there like any type of match that, that they have to, they have to do with this? Or is it just, is it a one hundred percent funding?
No, there's a ten percent match. So they purchased the property initially, then they have a ten percent match and then their proceeds will go through to, to the next project.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Director. We can come back to you now and your architect.
Okay, so we'll bring the architect. We can speak to the pricing, significance and, and how much we, I won't say fought, but pushed back on the initial bid. And again, you know, I'm glad to hear you're all paying very close attention to this. But this is a challenge that we're facing every day in economic development with these rising costs.
And we did do several different scopes of work to try and bring it in. You know, there's the ideal and then there's the okay and then there's let's just get it occupiable. So that's sort of where we've been heading. But I wanted to address the, the fair market value a little bit too because fair market value right now is looking at a house that has no drywall, no pipes, no electrical, no furnace, no ductwork, no nothing. It's just studs and siding on the outside. And so it needs everything, windows, roof and all of the infrastructure. And that's one reason why this one is so expensive. I mean, the alternative is to tear it down and leave an open hole. It's also right near the Dana Thomas House, so it's in a row of buildings. So it sort of completes a, a cityscape that's all of an era, so.
Hold up.
Alderman Redpath.
Sir, come on back. So what's the, what's the value of the homes in the neighborhood?
I haven't done a market.
I mean, that's probably what the real question is, isn't it? If it's, if it's, if it's priced at twenty-four because of studs and siding, that makes sense. But if the houses around it are valued at an enormous number higher than that, then it makes sense to invest the two hundred and eighteen, what, two hundred, how much? A lot of money though, but it, and, and my, is that right?
I don't know what the value of the houses next to it are.
Do you, you got that on your screen, Jim?
No, I don't have it on my screen still, but I have a comment about that after you're done.
Well, that was, that's the whole point. The point is, is if it's bringing it up to value of the neighborhood, that makes sense. If it's not, if it's going to put it, be the most expensive house in the neighborhood, then, then we got a problem. But my second question to this is probably for the Director is that, is this money only for rehabilitation? Or is it possible to use it for tear down and rebuild new?
It could be used for both.
So is that an option for you?
It was, it was pretty, uh.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there. I just, I didn't know. I wanted to ask that question.
We, we did offer that as an option and I think he had to take it to his board and his board chose to proceed with this option.
It's not that I'm against the project because we always want to rehabilitate anytime we can. I just want to make sure that we're getting the value of what we are investing here and that's the most important thing for us. So we probably will get that information about the neighborhood within the next week. I, I know Alderman Donlin, he's pretty precise.
We can get that.
Thank you.
Okay. Who? Who we got? You finished? Okay. Any more discussion?
We have Director Posey.
Oh, come on up. Sorry, sir. I didn't see you back there hiding. Be hiding.
I just want to give a little bit more context. We talked about the housing market and things on different sides of the city. I'm currently trying to rehab a house that's in Ward Three, that's two-bedroom, one bathroom with a whole lot more than just the studs. The estimate came in at a hundred and eighty thousand. In order to tear it down and rebuild it, that's two hundred and fifty thousand for a lot less house than what Off-Supplying and Economic Development is talking about here. The sad reality is yesterday's price is not today's price. And if we're investing in our neighborhoods, we're investing in apartment buildings that people can live in, we're investing in the homes that people can live in, that raises, you know, health disparities, helps to mitigate those things, helps kids with education. There are a number of other factors that are at play when you're investing in property like this. I know you can look at the fair market value of what a house is or what the value that's estimated of the other houses in the neighborhood. But right now, the way the market is, regardless of what side of town you're on, regardless of whether you're paying with grant money or you're paying with money out of your own budget, the cost of materials, the cost of labor, especially right now when there's a time crunch and we have a limited number of contractors, period, to get things done, the price of everything is high. So I don't want you all to think that, I understand two hundred and eighty thousand is a high price, but in comparison to what we're dealing with trying to get rehab projects done across the board in all parts of the city, the sad truth is the prices have gone up. The price of concrete, the price of drywall, the prevailing wage that you have to pay to get the work done for people who are qualified to get it done. And I know it sounds like a money, a lot of money. Trust me, I've been beating my head against the wall in my office trying to get things done, trying to find a way to get the prices down. But like you said, this is the only chodo that we have here in the city. And in comparison to what the original bid was, this is leaps and bounds lower. And I know for a lot less house, I'm working with almost the same pricing because that's just what the market is right now. So you can look at fair market value, but right now with the way things are going, that's not really giving you a true understanding and perspective on what the housing market is looking like in general. So take with that information what you will, but I just wanted to let you know in all areas like this, we are struggling and seeing high prices with bids, the cost of material and the cost of labor. And that's on all sides of the city. I would advocate that we look at the fact that that's what the new normal is for pricing. We're looking at pricing that's gone up since the pandemic and there's not the same amount of funding out here that we had in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. But that hasn't lowered the prices for what we need to do. That hasn't lowered the need for the community of what needs to get done. So again, you do with that information what you will.
Director, I think that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get, to understand what the, what the complication is and when every variable that we have to go up against, we want to know what the value is in the market. And we know that the prices are out. I build every day. I build all the time. And I know what the prices are. They, they went through the roof and there's nothing we can do about that. And we want this type of project to come, but we want to make sure that we're getting the value. And I think that's what, what the questions are all about. We want to make this work.
And I completely understand that. What I'm saying is looking at the value of the other houses in the area may not give you an accurate perspective to assess the price that it's going to cost.
Well, there's more variables than just one though. That's the point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what, what does this have to agree?
Well, Roy, you got over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Your order. Come on with you, Alderwoman.
Okay, I'm just doing a little searching here on the fly. And according to the Sangamon County parcel information, it's sold in the year two thousand for a hundred and one thousand dollars. So we're not far out of the ballpark for what this property should cost. And it says the median listing price in this area is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. I don't know that you're necessarily, like, I'm not going to get comparables on this free Realtor site. But, like, we're not outside of, of, this isn't as bad as it sounds, is what I'm saying. This price is not outside of what we, what you would see on a house like this. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think what we really need to think about is ask ourselves why we're asking these questions when we're looking at this specific neighborhood and for this specific housing and the fact that this is federal money and not Springfield money. And, yeah, so that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I'll just say when the average citizen comes up here, we can't be talking forty and fifty. They got the same high prices, so just keep that in mind. The motion on the floor is for debate. No more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-three, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement with B Neighbors Affordable Housing for Veterans Incorporated for the construction of a learning technology and resource center located at twenty-eight thirty-five Stanton Street for an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved for second, I mean, for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory?
Motion for debate, sir.
Yeah, okay, so it's been properly moved in second for debate. Any discussion?
Yes. Harvey, Harvey. So I was just, my first, my first question will go to Harvey, Mr. Hall. So we, we talked about this, we, we talked about this, this project three years ago.
Yes, yes.
Um, and, and.
It's been a long time.
It's been some time. So we, we, we had a task. I had a task for you. And that was to go out into the community behind it, which is Stratford Place, and talk to that community and make sure they okay with it and, you know, get them to sign some petitions and things of that nature. Okay. Have we turned those in?
Yep.
Okay.
They on file.
All right. So what I want to do is I'm going to put this on debate. So I can review those and make sure that we, we've talked to everybody. Debate doesn't mean I'm not going to pass it or, or we're not going to pass it or we're not going to vote on it. But I am going to put it on debate so I can make sure that I have a communication with that community. And I think that's the only right to do to that community, right?
Alderman Sean Gray. As you asked me to go out, matter of fact, you said you'd like to know what those, I'm kind of, uh.
Individuals.
Let me get it. As you asked me to make sure that community was okay with the veterans.
As you asked me to make sure that community was okay with the veterans' homes, me, the other members of the veteran community got together, went out in that neighborhood, and got over three hundred twenty-some signatures.
I understand.
Everybody over there signed their signatures. Matter of fact, you count them up, I bet you ain't but three hundred twenty-some people live out there, and they, every last one of them households signed our petition. We brought the petition here, we gave it to the secretary, and all that, I did as you asked, and also, you had a couple more things you asked me to do, and I got that accomplished too. See, being a Marine veteran, I get a mission, I'm gonna accomplish it, right?
Absolutely.
And so I did everything you asked, and this whole city council voted ten, yes, it was a couple aldermen wasn't alderman back then, but we had ten votes for everybody in here on our deal of, of veteran community center in the neighborhood over there. Where I'm showing Gregory is the alderman.
So, all, all I'm saying is, I gotta put it on debate, I have to make sure of these things and, and talk with that community, 'cause I have had some calls and questions and, and I'm just, I'm just not serious.
I'm curious of how, how are you is gonna find out, you gonna go back to every house I know?
No, 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 no. They have a neighborhood association that meets on Tuesdays, and if I have to miss a, a city council, or, or whatever the case may be, I want to go, 'cause, 'cause I think people deserve.
I'd love to go with you.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, 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 it's not about it. In fact, that's ideal for us to go together to that community, 'cause today is the first time that we're revisiting this again, right? In three years, it's been three years, going on four years since we visited this project. We had to make, we had to do those things, I asked you to do those things because of how the neighborhood was feeling, it was another project.
I came back with their feelings, they said yes.
Absolutely, so, so, it's, it's my job to make sure, though. I have to make sure that's, that's, that's a neighborhood over there, we just had another project over there that.
Every veteran at Springfield right now is watching this.
I understand, and I, I, I respect our veterans, and I respect our community as well.
Do you know what our project about, do you get a chance to read it?
That's why, that's, that's why I'm asking for this to be put on debate, so I can, so I can go back through it, re-educate myself.
I can explain it to you right now.
But hear me, but hear me out, this is why we get split as a community, this is not your fault or my fault, this is when I'm at, this is, this is something I just spoke on before.
Definitely.
About our departments ensuring that we know what projects are coming forth in our ward, we want spending this type of money, so we can go out into our communities and make sure that everybody's gonna be comfortable with what's coming their way. Because, you know why? 'Cause we have worked hard over there, I think we had this conversation, we, we have thousands of apartments over there that we've had to clean up.
You want me to bring all three hundred in this, in this city council?
Hear me, absolutely. So then, then we'll know.
Then you'll be satisfied?
Absolutely, because I, I have to.
Three hundred people in this city council, really?
I, I have to make sure that, that the community's gonna be okay with that. I, I know the same people you know in that community, right? And I've talked to them, and they want to make sure that we come to their community and we explain to them and say, hey, this is what it's gonna be, this is what it's about, da-da-da, you know?
When last time have you spoke to them?
Um, just yesterday.
Had a concern about this project?
They want to know what it is, they don't know.
They know what it is.
So, so, listen, so, hear me out, hear me out, hear me out, hear me out.
One at a time, one at a time.
So in this process, right, when we use this type of funding, we put out a public notice, how many comments you got on it, Val?
This particular one?
None, right? So that means nobody even knows that this was coming forth. I didn't even know. I didn't know till the, till today, I got your email that you sent me, I seen it on the agenda, I talked to Keisha about what was on her, and then how we don't know about it. Earlier this year, we, we briefly discussed, and I said, yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the project, we, we, when, when the former mayor was in office, we had visited this.
Since you're not aware, uh, since you don't remember the project?
I do remember it.
Hey, if I tell the rest of the city council?
Absolutely.
What this project is about.
Can I just enter for one second? This project, to give the rest of them background, this project is funded by, this project is funded through IDA for the tiny homes. We were just contributing at the city by doing this, what's it, what are we?
Learning Technology.
Learning and Technology Center. So, it, he's already been approved for funding through Illinois Housing Development Authority for the rest of the homes. I just wanted to be, to make sure everybody knows that. I, I'm sure you do, Alderman, but I just want to make sure everybody else does.
So I'm just trying to do my job as the alderman to make sure that I'm not gonna have a big blowback from, from a community with two hundred thousand dollar homes in it, and, and that's just my job.
Each, each one of these homes costs approximately one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars.
I understand that.
I have eighteen of them.
I understand that, but, but we still have to, there was another project that was trying to be done by, by some individuals in this room, and the community across the street definitely had some problems, and that, that problem, now that project is not, not going along.
The city council, that's okay.
Absolutely, need the chair.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
So, so Val? Based on what you just said, um, based on what you just said, so, it's just this, if, it's just this resource and learning center that wouldn't go, the housing itself is going, right? That project's already approved, have we approved that?
Have you taken any steps towards, um?
Yes, planning.
Plant, the.
The planning, uh, we, we.
Planning is only.
You haven't gotten permits yet.
We got, can't get permits till we start building, but we got, uh, from the planning, uh, planning zoning, went through passage zoning, you guys approved the ten votes, approved this project.
But my, my question is, are we putting the cart before the horse here? Should we, should we get the houses first and then this?
I'm gonna explain it to you. What she is trying to say is that this center, this project consists of eighteen single-dwelling homes, okay, with a learning technology resource center. The eighteen single-dwelling homes is funded by IDA already with approximately four million eight hundred thousand dollars, all right? IDA would not fund housing, I mean, would not fund anything other than housing, so this is a learning technology center. So when we first got through, our first time we went through, they wanted to fund us four million eight hundred thousand dollars, we, where I decide to talk to the team, we didn't want just the houses by themselves, 'cause we recognize housing alone is not the solution to homelessness. They need technology-trained resource center, where they have these services on-site. If you look at the poster, did they get a poster?
No.
Did they get a poster?
No.
You pass it on, if you look at this site here, you'll see the eighteen single-dwelling homes, you'll see, you'll see the learning technology center. In the middle.
I think you brought this to us before.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I've seen it. I just, my question, though, was, is, is you gotta come back through to, for the housing portion.
The, the housing portion, I mean, they have, they have to come through permitting and do all of that.
But does they have to come back through council?
No.
Not with IDA funding.
It's already been approved.
Okay.
By the city council to do this building, do this project, and what, uh, what, what I was explaining to you that IDA is funding the eighteen single-dwelling homes. We're standing before you today as the city council to fund only the learning technology resource center, 'cause like I said before, I was watching the meeting last week when Josh Sable was up here, and LaKeisha Persson has a question, Roy Williams had a question, even Sean Gregory had a question about the homelessness in their neighborhood, you know? So, this, and they kept asking about the mental, the mental patients and all of that, this learning-trained technology resource center will assist, provide mental health services, it will provide, uh, teach them how to maintain self-sufficiency, teach them how to, uh, keep home stability, all of this, they get inside this center. And when we deal with this center, we go so far as naming it a building with no walls, which meaning that in time of, say we have another.
Big storm.
Come through, and all of a sudden, uh, the, the veterans can't get to the center. We have a monitor inside each room where they can still receive services from their center on its spot, and it's nothing mandatory. One thing like Josh, uh, uh, Josh Sable said is that the boundaries, in order to get into your homes, are so high, some people can't get into them. We at B Neighbors made our boundaries so low, every veteran with a DD two, with a DD two fourteen form is able to get inside these houses, and not only get inside the houses, but have this, this services from the learning technology resource center. So we not asking the city to pay for any house, we is asking for the learning technology resource center.
I understand that, but my, my question was, if, let's just say, for some reason this doesn't go, the housing portion has already been approved.
Right.
So we don't have to act on that.
Right.
So it's going, it, it's going, right?
No, 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 this, this was going on with that, is that, see, when IDA fund money, they'll fund ninety percent of the project. The project, project costs five point two million dollars, so they're gonna fund four point eight million of that five point two, all right? So the ci- city show that they got interest in it by providing other money for the learning technology resource center. See what I'm saying? So if this don't go through.
It's a package.
Yeah, so this don't, so if the city don't, don't go through with IDA, the whole project don't go together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Redpath.
So Mr. Hall, uh, I'm not speaking for Alderman Gregory, but I am speaking as a veteran too, because I don't think you're gonna have much opposition from the city council on things to do with veterans, I'm a thirty-year veteran myself. And the, the bottom line is this, th- there's a process that we go through, and I, I think what he's trying to say is he just wants to clarify a few things, but, um, I really think the support's here for this project, but Alderman Gregory, just like the rest of us, uh, want to make sure that they got their Ts crossed and their Is dotted, make sure everything's okay. So, don't get discouraged that, that he put it on debate, because that's just a process, a, a part of this process that works, and, um, but, uh, I, I'm personally in favor of this project, and I'm gonna vote for it, but he just is looking to be able to go ask some questions and clarify a few things, but I, I think if, uh, you guys get together and talk, I think it's gonna get worked out, okay? All right.
Hey, Alderman Gregory.
So, my, my question, is this gonna be veterans only, or is it gonna be, see, see, you, you spoke on something, and this was the contention last time, right? It was whether it was gonna be homeless individuals that we were trying to place in these, in these homes, or was it going to be veterans? And we spoke on how there was only one undocumented veteran. So the, the gentleman that you, that you, that you brought in, they all have homes. I, I, I know a few of them, so I, I don't have a problem with individual tiny homes, but I'm telling you, I'm telling you, that community will kill me if I put the wrong thing over there, trust me.
Well, the community.
So, so, so I should have the right, and we should have the right, to go to our community, it's our community.
I want to go back out there again.
And, and make sure that they know what's coming to them, and what we're gonna do.
I would love to go back out there with you again.
All right.
And we go to the, uh, neighborhood, uh, me, like you said.
Okay.
Together.
All right.
And, and address the people there.
Yes, sir.
But this, this place here is for homeless veteran only. You said there's only one documented homeless veteran, right? You show me a veteran that's homeless, is willing to, to, to admit that he's homeless. We have too much pride to say that we're homeless, so we not gonna go down there and get that service. Me, Archie Ford, and Deacon down at Salvation Army, we go out on foot patrol, we go find homeless people, that would lead me to this project. When I walked behind the Shell's gas station on South Grand and saw this veteran's back there talking on the phone with his son, I said, what, I said, excuse me, he said, let me get done with this conversation. He got done talking to his son, he said, I gotta keep my phone charged, 'cause my phone, my son keep calling me, and these people let me charge my phone up, and I said, what's going on? He said, I'm homeless, he want to stay with me, I ain't got nothin' for him to stay, the whole thing, right? And that sparked a fire in me, and after walking around, I found six more veterans. Guess how you know veterans? You have to be a veteran, know a veteran. Somebody, they stand out on a sign waving their veteran, nine, nine, ten, ain't not a veteran. You talk to a veteran, you'll know if you're a veteran or not. So, so the need for this project is the Didi.
I totally understand where you're coming from, let me, let me tell you something personal, my, my auntie who was homeless just died, we just found out, she just died, right? So I totally, totally am for shelter for those on the street, on the streets who don't have it, I'm totally for it, right? But we, there's a way that we have to do things.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
There's a respect that I have to give to community.
I understand what you're saying, being, being, uh, the alderman over there, you have to go through this process.
You've seen what we went through.
But that's why, that's why I did, like you asked, I went and I did that, that's why I'm willing right now, I have to listen to you talk, I understand, I listen to Mr. Redpath, I understand that this something that you have to, this is your community, they look for you to do the right thing over there.
All right, let's.
Am I right or wrong?
Let's get together and we'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go handle this.
Well, I appreciate y'all coming to that agreement, all the woman kindly.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm sorry, sir. I, I, just real quickly, I just want to be very clear, the center that, that you're talking about is that supportive function and supportive housing?
Right.
So this, this is the part that, because it's one thing to get someone into a house, but to keep them, as you said, and I, I'm sorry, I'm kind of reiterating, you said it, but what this, what this, what this is commitment from the city is that part of, of this community-based housing where you provide, yes, training, but also those other kind of non-tangible supports where people are checking, someone's checking in on them?
Yes.
This is what you're talking about, okay? And, and I'm sorry, did you say medical also?
No.
No medical, okay, but so, but it is more that practical, hands-on, and then if, if there is like a major weather event, you can still have check-ins and communications with people, the people who are living in the homes.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much, I just want to make sure I was clear on that, thank you.
Here ain't no more discussion. The motions for debate, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing a contract with InterVision International Incorporated for training and materials on the new conversation program involving bias and community relations training in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for consent, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-five, an ordinance accepting quote number two seven one five eight four three and authorizing purchase of Motorola radio equipment and services from Motorola Solutions for, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Second. Properly moved in second for consent, any discussion? Here ain't none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-six, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of four to four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents to Corinne settles, a Public Works employee for settlement of workman's compensation claim for case number twenty-four dash WC dash zero zero four three two three.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for consent, any discussion? Here ain't none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-seven, a resolution for the designation of Laurel Streets from Glenwood Avenue to Walnut Street as Blessed Sacrament Way for the Blessed Sacrament Church.
Motion for consent.
What? It's been properly moved in second for consent, any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have something, yeah, I would just like to say that this is in honor, oh, it says here, uh, the hundredth anniversary of Blessed Sacrament Church being open, um, Um, so I'm really happy and very thankful for the folks at Public Works for getting this um, set up and hopefully we can get that street sign set up in time for uh, the September fourteenth centennial. Um, I really appreciate everyone's hard work on this, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Here ain't none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of seven police interceptors in the amount not to exceed four hundred one thousand four hundred forty-six dollars from Dana Safety Supply Incorporated for the Springfield Police Department.
Consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Here ain't none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, three thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of thirteen police interceptors in the amount not to exceed six hundred seventy-two thousand twenty dollars from Marl Brothers Ford Incorporated for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for the consent agenda, any discussion? Here ain't none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business, any Alderman got any, or woman have any unfinished business? Uh, Alderman, or Alder Woman Norteriano?
Yes, thank you Chair. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, just a friendly reminder for everyone to not blow their grass clippings into the sidewalk or street. It's very dangerous. Um, and then also another very friendly reminder that um, if you live in a home uh, where you have an alley, uh, regardless of how tall your privacy fence is back there, that is your responsibility to keep up with that alley. Um, all the weeds and, and brush and things that are growing behind your fence um, is, is a homeowner's responsibility and not the city's responsibility, so. Uh, that completes the friendly reminders portion of this. Um, and I uh, just have a couple of questions for, probably for Public Works um, regarding uh, demolitions and our vacant properties list.
Let's read the food, see if you can come up, please.
Wasn't trying to break any records.
I'm trying to rush.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so um, I was just curious, uh, I haven't seen the vacant properties list. Is that something that we do put on the public facing website?
Uh, not on a regular basis, but I can get it for you very easily, if you'd like that.
Yeah, I just like to see that, and um, I was just wondering how up to date it was, and then also, does that include commercial properties?
Generally not, but I, I'd have to take, well, there's thirty-five, I believe, on there right now, and then there's another twenty or twenty-five that we are considering, so.
Oh, okay.
It's a long list, and it gets longer all the time.
Yeah, only thirty-five, that's surprising. So what criteria is it other, it's, so it's not just vacant properties? Is there another?
Uh, there is a uh, long list of difficulties uh, that are associated with these properties. Remember, these are primarily private properties.
Okay.
So there is a very long process uh, of complaints and inspections that go on with it.
Okay, so this doesn't capture our properties that are vacant, that just, that are being kept up with?
Uh, not necessarily, no.
Okay. I'll talk to you about that offline. I, I thought we had something in code about tracking vacant properties. Um, okay, and then um, update on our, our demolitions. Um, could you fill us all in on uh, the demolitions for this season?
Well, uh, we uh, left the contract and uh, the response that we had was incomplete, so we had to let it again. I think we just, just put that out.
Mm-hmm. And so um, do we expect to have any demolitions completed um, this season?
This season, absolutely.
Okay, okay, wonderful. Um.
Would you like to come and watch one of them get knocked down?
Uh, yeah, hopefully one a couple blocks away from me.
Uh, well, we'll see, we'll see about that one, but uh, the first one we take out, I will invite you personally.
Okay, great. Um, and uh, another thing, um, I, I'll ask you about this offline. Um, that's it, thank you.
Are you finished, Alder Woman?
Yes.
I, I learned that from the mayor. So uh, oh, Alder, Alder Woman Purchase.
You skipping.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory, go ahead.
I, I just wanna say real quickly, um, you know, to, this is probably new business, or, no, this is unfinished business. Alder Woman Conley, this speaks on, Aldo, yeah, I said Alder Woman, making, trying to make sure, no, I don't want no trouble. Um.
That's good.
Traffic, and, and this is really to our community, we, probably some of us might need to go back to uh, driving school. Yellow means slow down, not rush the lights. And, 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 you know, I say that as I'm coming down Monroe from work one, uh, one day, and um, you know, the, the light is clearly red and, and it's going yellow, and I happen to be next to one of the Massey family members going home, and had she not been paused as, as thinking, she would've got tow off, you know, a- a- at these intersections. And, and, and much of our problem is people in a rush, I think we just all need to slow down, and that's, that's to our community, not to, to us, 'cause of course we don't speed, but um, you know, yellow means slow down at those lights, and you know, my son's just starting to drive, and I know some of us um, have, have that, and, and you know, one of the things I'm teaching him is, is take about three seconds even after it's green, people behind you, let them honk at you all you want, um, because we, we have a really, really bad problem in this city with people trying to make that yellow light, and, and we, we can wait a few moments, so. Um, real quickly, I just wanna, you know, speak on, we, we did have a good meeting with Chief Scarlett um, over, over different, different topics and videos that, that have come to our attention in the community. Um, so I just wanted to say that publicly, as it was brought to us publicly. Um, we had fruitful conversations on, on, on some things that um, from a law enforcement's perspective, that, that they believe that um, we can work out, and from a community um, aspect of, of, of what we wanna look for to continue to do. Um, we'll continue to have those conversations, we'll continue to make sure that any issue that's brought to us, we, we, we push the process um, out and um, you know, have truthful and, and, and good conversations. So I appreciate Chief and his staff for allowing us to have that conversation, even uncomfortable conversations, and we're gonna continue to do those things, so I appreciate, I just wanna update our council on those conversations as well as the public, thank you.
Are you finished, Alderman Gregory?
I am.
Alder Woman Purchase.
I know Madam Mayor does that to me. Say Alder Woman Purchase, you don't have any announcements? But um, I do wanna take a moment to thank, I, I have one of my NPOs here in the room, Officer um, Davis, and Officer Davis did a, a great job this weekend, along with my other NPOs. Uh, we had our uh, Vinegar Hill Neighborhood Block Party, and all of our first responders um, participated in yoga, which was relaxation, but it was a great turnout, and then thank our SIU School of Med- uh, Medicine students. We had over a hundred students that came out, and we walked every block, every alley, and we cleaned up. And my zoning manager, Brady, he did a phenomenal job, and this is just what community looks like. The engagement that went on with our officers at the doors, the students getting to learn how we had open abandoned houses, and we were able to look in them so that they could see what, what we do every day. So I thought that was important, and it was great for the community to see, and I just wanted to thank you all um, for that. And then lastly, uh, still c- continue to commend our police department for staying on top of Fifth and North Grant. This morning, it was about thirty individuals at maybe seven-thirty out there. That's a lot. They were hanging in the parking lot, and then we just had a incident that happened on Sunday morning, so I just, I wanna reiterate that we're, we're working hard, and we have some things coming forward to the community that's constantly calling, everyday asking, can you get them moved along, can you get them from out in the street? There are things coming forward to address these issues. Thank you.
Are you finished?
I am.
Thank you. Redpath. Well, he's military, yeah. Alderman Redpath.
Call me chief. Um, I wanna concur with Alderman Purchase on that. I got, I got uh, texts and emails at my house about the Fifth and North Grant problem, so if we can work on that, that'd be great. Um, I got a uh, email from uh, Dan Shields, he's the uh, pastor at uh, Cotton Hill United Methodist Church, and I don't know if this goes to CWLP or for the Fire Department, but the fire hydrant across the street from them has been out of service for over a year, and it's posted that it's out of service. Could somebody check that and see if we can get it back up to speed?
Yeah, actually, I'll need to hit the podium, but if you've got the address.
I'll just give it to you.
Yep.
There's that one.
Thank you.
Then the next problem I got is um, this is for the CWLP Director, uh, you don't have to come up, but you can just listen. But um, for about two years, I've been talking to you about electricity down at Mariner Point. It uh, we've had prob- problems on Island Bay about partying late at night, and this is a, direct for the Chief of Police too, 'cause we need to get some patrols down there. Uh, we shut down the gates down there at about ten o'clock at night, and, 'cause we try to let the fishermen go in there, and uh, then they congregate outside the gate, and the music's banging and rattling people's doors off. So if we can get an increased patrol down on Island Bay, down by Mariner Point, that would be great. And then uh, uh, Director, we talked to Scott Rogers, has talked about uh, putting power down there so we could get some cameras down there for our security team. Would you please follow up on that and get back to me? Thank you.
If I could just speak to that real quick, Alderman, I, I know that our um, newly promoted neighborhood police officer who's in, in charge of the lake area, they had some good conversations with the neighbors down there. We have worked with CWLP to get lighting up there, gates, extra patrols and whatnot, so we'll, I'll follow up with them.
I'll give you this one, and this is uh, Eric Hiller, lives down there.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you. And then um, and then I got, I've been, I, I was gone for a week or so uh, uh, visiting my father-in-law, but bottom line is, is that I know everybody got to hear it last week about the firefighter's test, and I don't know what the deal is with that, but I've had several calls on it, and if, if we got a solution, or if, if, if we're doing something about the test, I know we had problems with the police a while back about some of the qualifications for their testing, and was, it was fixed. So is there something, is there a glitch, or what's, what's going on? If you can tell me, please.
We'll, we'll meet in the middle, we'll discuss together.
Um, I don't think we have a problem with the test. I think we have a really good test. I did pull data based on what was asked. I got the last of it right before I came. Um, so I've got an email, but I thought it was rude to send it while you were here, so I will send it actually tomorrow morning. Um, so we, we have spent a lot of time talking about the task.
The good thing with the voices who've raised concerns is it has allowed us to look into this and verify that this test company is legitimate, that they are using national standards, and what the test uh, yielded is, is, is uh, true information.
Well, let me give you this, let, let me give you this email, because some of the questions that were asked on the test seem a little different. And you take that one, you guys can look at it.
Wonderful.
But obviously, there was concern. I heard that somebody addressed the council last week, and I, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause when I got home, my phone was full.
Yep, yeah, no, we've been meeting and going over things and looking into it.
I did print out, so if anybody is like, you know, so eager to look, I do have what I'm gonna send in the email, so if you'd like a copy, I do, thank you.
That's all, that's all I'm asking you to do, is just take a look at it, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks.
That's all I got, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Robber.
Doug, this is for you, if you wanna come up. If not, uh, could you find out and tell me what's going on out in the Walnut Valley subdivision with their electricity? I get calls once a week, twice a week for outages. My understanding is there's some, some equipment needs to be replaced, and uh, whether it's pricing or whatever, but could you please check into that and?
Where's that exactly, Walnut Valley?
Walnut Valley's just north and east of the airport out there.
Okay. I can look into that, yep.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
I've got a quick question for probably Corporation Council, but um, I wanna make sure we, we had the discussion about when we go out, our inspectors now go out for lawn issues, that we write a ticket and they pay, that they have, they get, they, it's like a parking situation where they can come to, to Admin Court and show that they did it, but they still have to pay the ticket. Is that correct? And, and if not, we, if, whatever we have to do to get that started, um, I still, I was, and I'm, and we all have people in our wards that will not cut their grass, and they, they're, it's just a game they play, and until we start hitting them, they're gonna continue this. And next su- next spring, everybody knows that, that the grass is growing, we shouldn't, there should be no warnings. It should be, we go out, measure, write, send them a ticket, and it's just like a parking. If I go, if I run out and feed the meter, or move my car, they don't let me out of that ticket. So I wanna make sure that, that we are obeying that, and Public Works is actively ticketing, and we're not letting people off, because enough's enough.
We, we are, we are pursuing it in that manner, um, after your direction. Um, I will send you a breakdown of the procedure of what we do.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, i- i- is the judge, is the judge the one dismissing it?
No, I just wanna make sure we're doing it.
Because they show up and it's cut?
I just wanna make sure that, that, that we are issuing the tickets, is what my question was.
You're on the issuing.
I don't want the ju- now, to me, the, i- if they got pictures and they, they, they got grasses tall, Admin Court should not release it. They should not let them off of it, and I wanna make sure that that ha- you know, that doesn't happen either, because this is the only way we're gonna get people to mow, and mow, mow, you know, more often. Because what, as, as we all know, what happens is, they'll wait until it's eighteen inches tall, and we have to send them a letter, and they'll wait another week, and then they'll, they, they may cut it just so they don't get another letter, but until we start fining them, and we fine them right away, so that they know they're gonna get a fine, that, that's, that's the only way we're gonna solve this problem. And I think that, you know, we shouldn't give any more warnings. Everybody knows the grass grows in, in April, and so, you know, they just have to understand that when we go out, if they're in violation, they're gonna get a ticket, and we gotta, I, I, I guess we really need to look at the, the structure of you have someone that continuously violates, do we have a progressive uh, ticket structure? And so, thanks, Greg.
Alder Woman Conley.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna um, slightly piggyback off of Alderman Hanauer, um, but just to remind Corporation Council, um, I also do wanna make sure that we get updates to our kind of native landscaping um, requirements and ordinance, because I do agree, I, we see them all over the place, people who just let kinda icky lawns grow out of control. But we also have people who um, who put a lot of time and thought into native plantings that might not always look like a manicured lawn, but it does have a function, it does have a place. So we need to make sure that we have a consistent and clear policy so that people, because I, I agree with Alderman Hanauer on, on ticketing for the overgrown lawns, but I also wanna make sure that we have protection for those people who have, who've taken that time and effort to do that native landscaping. So just, and, and I know you've had a full plate, so um, just wanna put this back, make sure it's on, at least the appetizer part of the plate.
How do, how do we differentiate on that? 'Cause I have a couple of homes, I mean, how do we do, I mean, do we have to do an ordinance for, an ordinance? Or how do we decide?
Well, so we do have an ordinance on the books, but what I would like to see is an enhancement of that. So there are, I mean, you can, you can have native identified plants and species. There are organizations that can do certifications of that. There are certain plants that meet it. Just having tall grass is not a native planting. It, that's not, right, but the, no, they're, they're absolutely a criteria that other communities use for that, and um, fortunately, we have a Corporation Council who has experience with that, and again, it's, it's just one of the things, I know the many things on your plate, but it just is a reminder for that.
Y- y- that's right, and until, until we get that worked out, we s- we still are bringing um, these cases to our administrative court, and so if, if somebody can show and prove that they, you know, that they have a native grass, you can usually tell, and so we, we still have that process in place, um, but we, we will prepare that ordinance.
Thank you very much.
If there's no more unfinished business, any new business, anybody with new business? Uh, wow, here we go, let's see, is that old kindly?
No, that, I'm, I, I'm old.
You're finished, okay.
I'm done, I'm old.
So we'll start with Alder Woman Purchase.
Thank you Chair. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge um, our Office of Planning and Economic Development. Uh, Ms. Julia did an interview yesterday, and so did I, on the lead abatement program, and received numerous calls. We have a, a lot of funds available that we do need to use, so I'm encouraging all of my colleagues to push that program out into your area, especially if homes was built before nineteen seventy-eight. I learned a fun fact, that six-two-seven-oh-three, we have the largest lead paint throughout the state of Illinois. And we're in Springfield, so we're superseding our big city of Chicago with lead paint, and just acknowledging for people in their homes to not feel, um, to not feel afraid to call us for help to come out and test, because no one thinks when you buy and purchase a home, let me go in and test my paint on the wall. You don't find out until a child is sick, and then IDPH comes in, Illinois Department of Public Health, to come in and test your walls after those walls have been disturbed. So just encouraging us all to promote this program out so that we don't lose any funding, it hadn't been used in a while, and um, a big kudos too, to our department, because now she's been asked to come and present in front of HUD, and you know, we may be best practice, because they haven't had any of these type of training programs throughout the state. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I will be continuing to help promote the program, especially in my ward, uh, with the older neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Woman Norteriano.
Thank you Chair. Um, I was wondering if there was anyone who could speak to the nineteen oh-eight press conference that's gonna happen on Friday at ten. Um, I got a meeting invite today, but um, just a meeting invite.
This group.
I heard that.
So the White House had asked us to put together something for the, for this Friday, and we're gonna do it at 10 o'clock. We've invited several people. White House is not coming, nobody from their representation. We're gonna do it at the site for for the CAP 1908, or for the 1908 race riot, and it'll be at 10 a.m. this Friday.
So if there are people who would like to attend and this doesn't work for their schedule, is there any flexibility? Or did the White House say it's gotta happen on Friday?
This was the day that we had, we had agreed with them that we're gonna do it.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Alderman Conley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, like a fine wine that ages, we have one of our members of this fine horseshoe who has a birthday coming up, and I just want to wish Alderman Larry Rockford a happy birthday tomorrow.
He said you fine as wine.
And that is all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Gregg.
Well, you know, I, alright, 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 alright. You know, a couple of things, I, I, I too am happy to hear that information. I did send an email for some information before I took that interview because I wanted to know what I was talking about. I am happy to to hear about the certifications and now how many are working for the city for us? I believe, Julia, you said three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three got the certification. How many working for us?
Thirty-three. So we have, out of the day, we have three lead abatement contractors.
Right.
All minority that are able to bid on projects.
Right.
And so now they have a trained workforce that they can hire.
Okay, can you talk to me about the other?
Come up.
Yes, please, I'm sorry. Thank you, Rob. Can you talk to me about the other 30? And like, what is it, is it, is it something holding them back from working for us? Or have they just took the course and said, we don't want to work, or?
No, in order to bid on the projects, you have to be a licensed lead abatement contractor. Then they hire workers and licensed supervisors. So the 33 participants, all 33 received their lead worker certification. Thirty took a third-party exam and received their lead supervisor license. They all got RRP certification.
Okay.
EPA RRP certification. And now these contractors are able to hire them. They wouldn't have had a workforce to hire in Springfield.
Right.
Now we have three contractors and they have a workforce they can hire.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Now, I I was told by some of those who went, they they didn't make it because of like child support and things like that, is that, is that true?
Not true, we didn't, we didn't check anything like that.
No, I'm just saying from the program or the grant that it was.
No, we don't, we don't look anything like that.
All right, all right, thank you. I appreciate you. Good work. My, my second, I would echo, you know, the press conference is Friday for for the 1908 race riot monument announcement. We we all are very proud of that, even some of us who have been working, you know, for a long time to see that and even before I even sat up here. And, you know, all I would like to see, Chair, and those who who would care, is that we make sure that we we don't miss anybody on this important invite, right? There's some people that wasn't included in the email that have been a big part, big part of pushing the narrative of the importance of the 1908 race riots and different groups. And I think that is important. And I think for us to cut anybody out for any reason is sad and we we should not do that. And we have to make sure that everybody who has something to do with it. Because, you know, this happened now, but it's, it's been, I mean, six years, it's probably been about 15 years of people pushing. I know one group, you know, advocated to push the tracks 11 inches, 10 inches to the east so we can preserve these sites and things of our nature. We want to make sure we hit everybody. I know everybody's excited and wanna, you know, puff their chest out, but I I think we gotta make sure that we we include those who, in front of the community, have been fighting a long time. You know, Mr. Leroy Joy is not even here to see it, but there is others, you know, that we want to make sure. So that's my spiel. I made it short as I could.
All right, thank you. Citizens, any citizens?
Alice Ramey.
No, citizens. Come on up, Alice, come.
I'm a citizen here longer than you.
Yeah, come and talk to your favorite Alderman.
Yeah, okay.
Couple of years, Rob.
I, we have a little problem with landlords out of the state buying homes that are not registered, okay? And that are trying to get out of one part of their contract to go into a different part of the contract because some of the houses are under Section 8 that they buy. And according to what I know about Section 8, once you buy a house and it's settled and whatever you put in that contract is supposed to be in that contract, and that's what Section 8 goes by. I may be wrong on some of that because I haven't messed with Section 8. There's a lady that lives on Monroe Street, has lived in this house for 25 years, raised her kids, raising her grandkids, and the owner of the house sold it to a company named Wise Investment out of Ohio. And what I have in front of me is a contract that they want her to sign and which would take effect in June of first on 2024. And it says that the agreement is, agreement is a 30-day written notice, it's rented every day, the rent for the preferences is 1050, 1,500, the house is not worth that, okay, per month. And she wants to $600 per month, 11 months, May 1st of '25, which time the rent will increase in Springfield housing current rate. Okay, that's what's in this contract. There's some other things, say, she wants to pay, have somebody pay $50 for her pets, she's got five, and she wants to pay a deposit of $600. She's never paid a deposit on this house since she's been in it, and she's never had to worry about having deposit for the pets. And the guy that sold it had it for 20 years, and another guy had it for five years before he sold it to this guy. I do believe it's time we have it registered. And I know that a lot of you people are not for it, including Purchase, if she buys houses outside or anybody else. I mean, she looked at me kind of funny, so that's why I said it. But it's the idea that we really do need it. We need it to make these people be accountable, just like you want to make accountable for the grass and and for the other things and the grass going into the streets. We need to make these people accountable for what they're doing to people. And I know that she's going to Housing tomorrow to talk about it, but I think everybody should know what they're trying to do. And if you want a copy of this, the young man behind you.
I was gonna say, I will, I will take that and leave, and I'll bring to my office. My office coordinator, Sean, will look into that issue for her. As far as the Section 8 housing goes, that would be under HUD and Springfield Housing authority. We don't actually, as a city, have any authority over the Section 8 housing, but we will look into this issue.
I appreciate it.
And we'll make sure, we will reach out to her tomorrow.
Because you know I will investigate.
I know, I know. Look, you know my office is right there in Ward 32, you know, right down the street. We, I promise you, we will look into it tomorrow.
All righty, thank you, Greg.
What about the one in Ward 2?
We'll talk about that. Just let me know, just.
Alderman Purchase.
I just want to be clear since Ms. Alice pointed out about me being against it. So tomorrow, I meet with the Realtors Association and the Landlord Association, and we're working together. So I just want to let you know, while you're trying to tell people that I'm against it, you're incorrect. I'm working to bring everybody to the table.
Because a lot of people were against it for a long time because they didn't want to take time to do it. And it needs to be done, very much so.
Thank you.
People are getting away with a lot of stuff.
All right.
Motion for executive session to do.
Cancel.
Two C 11 litigation.
Second.
You didn't ask if anybody else.
Yeah, well, he jumped the gun, that's why I didn't ask. Is there any other citizen that would like to address the council? Please come forward.
I just saw you jump up, Don.
This is just very quick. This is Don Hanrahan, Pleasant Plains, Illinois. This is a regional issue that we heard about just yesterday, and that is that the city is in discussions with Emberclear Lincolnland Energy Corporation for the acquisition of electricity purchases. We don't know, I don't know what that means. There's a lot of reasons to be concerned about getting involved with Emberclear, not the least is that their investors have to be nervous as all get out because they have to recover their $1.5 billion investment by 2032, or they have to prove that they're gonna capture 90% of the carbon by then. So the, in March, they put out a proposal for people to buy energy from this proposed plant that was supposed to have broken ground in 2019, and it's been held up by all kinds of problems. Anyway, if you, the, the reason that they did that is because their investors must be nervous, that's how I read it. And they have more reason to be nervous now because the regulations changed from, I think for private equity-owned utility from 2040 to 2032, that they have to be able to capture the carbon. And if they're gonna do that, if they are gonna be able to successfully do it, which is also a big question mark, it's gonna cost a lot of money, more than the 1.5 billion. So I'm just saying, before any agreements or commitments or discussions are had, just be careful that you're not getting involved with something that we should steer clear of. And, you know, I don't know a whole lot about this, I I admit it, but there are people who do. And one of the things that, just hearing about this, the way it came about, brought up to me is, can we have public quarterly or every other month, meetings of a public utilities committee of this organization? I know it's been talked about and we still haven't done it, but this would be the ideal type of thing to come up and let the public know, we're thinking about doing something like this, what are the pros, what are the cons? And that's just, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for listening to me again.
Thank you, sir.
I would just, real quickly, Chair.
Sure.
Point out, first of all, this is a power plant that hasn't been built yet. So, and and yes, I I see my co-chair red path is left, but we are working on getting a date very, very soon so that we can have a utilities meeting. I think the big complication was trying to get that outside of a regular committee of the whole. So we'll probably, we'll probably just connect that to a regular committee of the whole so that we don't have to try to find a time for everyone to get another meeting scheduled during a weeknight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Exec session?
Yes, we still need it under two C 11 litigation.
Okay.
Let's have a, you have a motion from Alderman Hanauer.
Second, I can't.
Thank you.
We're going.
Happy early birthday.
The time is now seven twenty-seven. All mics are hot, and everything is being broadcast.
Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second.